When we're gonna. When we're gonna start. Doing in. In in-house meeting instead of Zoom. It's been asked quite a bit. And. I know there's different variants going around and everything. But I guess it's gonna have to be a council decision. Of what's going on in but yes, I agree that we should all. Try to do video when we can. There are some places that can't. Do video because they just don't have the service to do it. So. But it's only fair to our constituents out here that they be able to get. To see the live person. That way they know. Exactly what's going on. We're getting some feedback somewhere.
Yeah, we are. Brian's looking at where it's coming. Go ahead, Don. I think you've got it taken care of.
Okay, I had done mute myself again. You muted everybody. So anyway. I think I think it's only fair to our constituents that we do have that. And I realize there's some people up there on. The upper parts. That don't get very good service. And. I would like to see it, you know. Something happen because. You know, it's it's different when you meet a person. See him and see the reactions and everything else instead of just seeing a blank picture out there. I don't feel that's fair to our constituents. So. You know, maybe we may talk about this and see about when the soonest we can start getting in there. Thank you. I'm done.
Thanks, Bonnie. Don, go ahead, please.
Thank you, Mayor. If we if we are having that discussion right now about whether or not to meet in person. I would like to voice my opinion against the idea. My reasons reasonings purely a personal. Medical reason why I don't wish to meet. Publicly for the chance of getting. Any kind of variant of COVID. Also, we are not able to ask. Whether or not everyone is. Who's attending, be it council or citizens, if they're vaccinated or not. And that that's important to me that we can't ask. So I feel the risk is too high. That's my personal opinion. And was there anything else that? We were discussing right now?
No, it's just council comments and announcements.
Oh, okay. Was this topic gonna come up later? I apologize.
No, no, it's fine. Audi had asked if I would bring it up in mayor's comments, and so I did. And then he. He reiterated his feelings about that. So I don't have any problem with counsel. We can just kind of slide into a council discussion about it if you'd like. Is there anyone else, any other council member who has an opinion if if counsel opinion is through?
This is Bobby. I have an opinion as well. And I know for me, I'm not even going back into my office. Right now until January 3rd. And that's as long as there's no additional shutdowns and, you know, and that has a lot to do with. Safety precautions for. People that are at risk and the population that I work with. And then, of course, I have some really. Have a person in my household that's really high risk for COVID. So. For me, I'm fine with still doing it remotely for a little while. It's better for me. Healthwise. And I and I do understand. I I really. I recognize that we miss a lot when we're not sitting together and you miss a lot of the little nuances and. Different things that go with conversation. So I would like to get back in person as soon as possible, but. Healthwise, I'm not in a hurry.
Thank you, councillor. And everyone else. Audi, I say a hand. Oh, is that Michelle? Michelle, I see your hand up. Go ahead.
Excuse me. I think we should get back in person as soon as we can. It would. Probably calm the nerves of a lot of the public to be able to see us all sitting there together. And speaking amongst each other rather than behind a computer screen.
Thank you, Michelle. All right, I I see. There's councillor Hollitt. Go ahead, councillor Hollitt. You haven't spoken yet.
Personally, I am fine coming in and meeting in the. The new council room. But I do share a lot of councillor Whitney's concerns and. You know, I know the comment was made that kids are back in school, but I think. That's being missed is the school has a lot of.
Cutting out.
Place that we are not able to do and account considered. And if we so the school has a lot of precautions that are in place. I don't believe we would be able to do, and I think we would.
Yeah.
Is this any better?
That will keep talking and we'll let you know if it's better.
Okay. I think that we're not. Able to all the same precautions in place that others might be able to, like the school, for instance. Their kids are spaced pretty far apart and the constant clings and things like that, and they limit the size of the groups. So although I am fine myself. In and meeting in person, I think that we need to still continue the opportunity for others to. Attend the meeting via Zoom, and I think we should extend that to councillors. So I'm saying that Ian and councillor Whitney, I think via Zoom and. Probably limit how many people we can have inside that smaller room at City Hall.
Great.
That's all I have.
Okay, thanks councillor Hollitt. And it was better vocally. You were still skipping out a little bit, but not quite as much. So is there? So I heard from Audi Kenyon, Whitney Coker, Hollitt. Bjornson? Councillor Bjornson, are you there?
I'm here.
I just want to give you the opportunity if you wish.
Yeah, I'm I'm personally like councillor Hollitt, okay with meeting in person again, but I definitely understand people's concerns. I think maybe discussing opportunity where those of us who are comfortable. Meeting in person, but still offering Zoom is a good idea. I'm kind of open to suggestions. It's hard because. I want to be safe for everybody and set a good example, but. I do agree that being in person and being able to talk face to face is important, so.
Okay, okay, that's great. And I still see hands up for councillor Kenyon and Spleedoff and Hollitt. Is this additional comments that you wanted to make?
Yes.
Okay. Councillor Spleedoff, go ahead.
Okay, yeah, I I have a, you know, I think we should start meeting, but like Bobby's. I'm sixty-eight. My wife's got COPD. And it's. We would put ourselves at risk. I can't even go see the doctor because they. Say that I'm at a high risk, so. But.
Right.
You know, I would mask up and. Do the appropriate thing if I can and. Hope I don't get it. And so. I'm probably one of the oldest ones out here that's.
I'm older than you are.
Oh, okay.
Not by much, though. I mean, not by much.
Yeah, but my my wife has COPD pretty. And it's not gonna get better.
Okay.
And so. I would hate to lose her.
Well, of course you would. Councillor Kenyon, go ahead.
Thank you. I just wanted to comment that. I would be okay if the councillor, if the council. Wanted to start meeting in person as long as it was optional for those who are medically. At high risk. To still continue to attend by Zoom.
Okay.
And I fit into that category.
Okay, councillor. So let me sum this up. You know, it sounds like we all recognize the importance of meeting in person. We all want to be safe. We all want to be. Careful with each other, with our families that we go home to, as well as our constituents. We do have the ability to meet in person. And we can distance ourselves. We can limit the number of people we allow in the rooms. There is a maximum as we count out by six foot. We would always have the ability for the public to zoom in and we have two options as far as those councillors who. Who are concerned about being in a in a room together. One of those options would be to allow them to continue to zoom in. And participate in the meeting that way. It would have to be, I believe, we did that way, we would want to say, okay. So, for example, I'm going to use councillor Kenyon. Councillor Kenyon is going to always zoom into us and join our meeting. That way we will set up for you and know that that's how you're going to do it. Until such time as you're ready to join us personally. Or the other option would be for councillors to come down to City Hall. We have several open offices and you can. You can zoom there. And I only offer that for those who are having difficulty with connections. You would have a good solid connection. Your Zoom connection would be would be. Hearable, audible. I know Chrissy has a hard time with hers. So that is an option also that we could throw in there for individuals who think they might want to do that. So council, without belaboring this too much, because we are on a really tight timeline. What I would like to do is suggest that you all think about this and that we make a decision on this at our first meeting in January. And that way we can set a date to it. How does that sound to everyone? Does that sound? I see. So I think. That's pretty good.
Are we gonna have any more meetings this month?
This is our last meeting. No, no, sixteenth is our last meeting. So we have one more meeting. We can address it at that one if you'd like.
Okay.
But I thought that would give us a full circle. Also would give us a chance to see if we have seen any rise in cases. Due to the variant. So far we haven't and but who knows? So let's put this on the agenda for this first meeting in January then. Does that sound good to everyone? And in the meantime, on the sixteenth, if you would like to come down into City Hall and join. Here you can. If you want to use a separate office, you can also. So just let Ryan know ahead of time so that you can make arrangements. Actually, I'm taking I'm gonna take that back. Can we do that on the sixteenth? Councillors who might want to use the office here for a better connection. Yeah, we can do that. Okay, yeah. Okay, thank you, council. Appreciate the discussion. Let's move on then to business from the city administrator. And I do want to say one thing to those that are zoomed in. We will have another public comment session very quickly here. And at that time, we do have some public comment that wants to be wanted to be made, and I'm going to do it at that time. There are some letters that wanted to be read, and I think we have a visitor, but thus we may also want to make public comment. So let's move down to ten point two. This is an OLCC permit. Brian, go ahead.
Yeah, it's ten point two, and it's an OLCC liquor license application recommendation. The corner bar has changed hands, ownership hands, and would like to. Our recommendation on their liquor license application. So the fiscal impact is undetermined. It's all dependent on how much liquor they sell. Your options here to recommend granting a liquor license or recommend denial of liquor license. Staff recommends option one and motions before you. And I've got the exhibit, all the backup application and.
I'd like to make a motion.
Go ahead, please, Audi.
I move we recommend the approval of the liquor license for the corner bar.
I'll second that.
I was motioned by councillor Spleedoff, and that was seconded by councillor Coker. Yes. Yeah, sorry. All right, is there any discussion, council? All right, let's move to the vote. Jackie, can we call for a vote?
Councillor Spleedoff.
Aye.
Councillor Whitney.
Aye.
Councillor Coker.
Aye.
Mayor Holston.
Aye.
Councillor Hollitt.
Aye.
Councillor Kenyon.
Aye.
Councillor Bjornson.
Aye.
That passes unanimously. Thank you. Eight point two. Brian, would you like to explain what is being asked of us?
Yeah, this is real shortly, because I just know about it, and the suspense date is is next week, so it'll be a verbal only, but. Some of you know Mike Ripley. He's the sort of the owner of Mudslinger Events who hosts Sasquatch Bureau. And this for this next season, he's actually got a an opportunity to host a national event. Kind of the finals. But he's got to get permission from their governing organization. So. As part of that process, the governing organization would like a letter of support from the community involved. So given the lead time, what I would do is if I get council's consent, I would generate the letter of support. And make sure that it goes to you sees it, but I would get it to him by the suspense date. And it will be kind of very similar to the other letters of support that you've seen recently. So as part of that, obviously, your option is to not do that or to allow me to generate the letter of support and get it sent to Mike. I recommend we do that. It's a great national wide event that probably would bring a lot of tourism and income to the city. So our motion would be just to recommend approval of the letter of support for Mike Ripley, Mudslinger LLC.
And I would just add to that that Mike has a good reputation with us, has done events here before. He's always on top of it. And keeps track of everything he needs to do, reports back to the city. He hasn't done this specific one here before, but as Brian said, it's a very large event. It's it's. It's a it's a worldwide draw, but heavy on nationwide draw, so we would have participants in the hundreds here. And he already has a plan on how that that will work. And didn't realize that he needed a letter of support from the community. So councillor Kenyon, I see your hand. Go ahead, please.
Yes, I move that we direct Brian to write a letter of support for Mike Ripley Ripley, if that's how you say it. Regarding the Mudslinger Events.
All second.
Motion made by councillor Kenyon and seconded by councillor Spleedoff. Council, do you have any questions? Okay. I don't see any. Jackie, will you call for a vote, please?
Yeah. Councillor Whitney.
Aye.
Mayor Holston.
Aye.
Councillor Bjornson.
Aye.
Councillor Hollitt.
Aye.
Councillor Spleedoff.
Aye.
Councillor Coker.
Aye.
Councillor Kenyon.
Aye.
Thank you, council, for that. Brian, get that going. And like you said, he needed please to have that too. Mike, before our next council meeting, hence the urgency of this one. So thank you so much for doing that. We don't have any public hearings or appointments. We are going to move to some public comment here. I have a couple of things that have come in, letters that need to be read for public comment, and then we will move into our work session. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Okay. Council comments. These were asked specifically to be read at a council meeting, hence why I'm doing this. Dear Oakbridge City Council, this is from Sarah Ultimus Pope. Please register my comments below for tonight's city council meeting, tonight's council meetings, and incorporate them into the official record. I'm sorry, I don't think I'll be there in person due to family needs. Although I'm personally not as available as I wish at this moment, I want you to understand that I am and will continue to track the role of the council during this pivotal time. And continue to raise concerns when necessary. I also strongly encourage those of you who have been attending meetings without a video stream to find a location where you know you have reliable internet so that you can turn on your camera. It is unfair and disrespectful to the citizens to not see and know for a fact that you are paying attention at all times. I am not trying to point fingers, but I feel I need to state the obvious that you are choosing to put your convenience before the duties of your office by not finding a way to fully participate. I'm not opposed to an occasional call of councillors when needed, but we are almost at one year of not watching a good portion of the council fully participate. It is unprofessional and unacceptable. Especially when the meeting topics are contentious, so please find a way to turn your camera on. Dear City Council, I'm increasingly concerned with the lack of professionalism and accountability of the members of Oakbridge City Council. The tone and tenor of council meetings continues to deteriorate, and it seems that this is based on interpersonal and personality conflicts and not true policy issue disagreements. As elected leaders, you have a duty to your constituents to work together and with your city administration to responsibly conduct city business. I think that there are small but significant steps that you can choose to take that can help to reduce the level of conflict and increase the likelihood of working together productively in the coming months. What I am advising may sound basic, but it is not. You need to be meeting in person altogether in one room productively to conduct city council meetings at work sessions. There is much that is missed by voice discussions alone, and it is far easier to misinterpret what a person is saying or to take offense or offend. When not speaking to a person directly, and there are studies to back this up. Please start meeting in person as soon as possible. COVID is not an excuse. If our children can meet in person, so can you. This request is probably too late to affect this tonight's meeting, but I ask if you discuss it and officially put your record which councillors oppose meeting in person. If there are none, then please make plans for future meetings to be in person. I trust that each councillor believes they are acting in good faith in doing your jobs, but ultimately, as a whole, you have led Oakbridge to a point of friction and gridlock. I ask that each of you step back and take a personal account of how your actions are helping Oakbridge and to find a constructive path forward. You are not elected to be critics or watchdogs. You were elected to lead. Good leaders are good team players. There is also a lot of literature literature backing this up. So please make it a priority to work together as a team and also find ways to work with your city administrator to build a team atmosphere. I think it would be beneficial for the council to set aside time once a month to focus on team building. For example. Find and attend training sessions, discuss and practice reflective listening, read and discuss the leadership book of the month, or find small community projects and pair up with a councillor you don't politically align with. I believe team building and meeting in person can lead to more constructive council meetings. Forming a foundation to rebuild trust is a professional thing to do and is necessary to find a productive way to work through the tough policy issues Oakbridge is facing. So please, step one, get back in the room together ASAP. Thank you for your time and consideration, Sarah Ultimus Pope. This is from hello, Oakbridge Mayor and City Councilors from Melody Cornelius and writing to ask if you can reconsider. I'm sorry, let me start again. I am writing to ask that you consider renegotiating with Brian in order to retain him in his position as city administrator. I am attaching a letter I wrote in support of renewing this contract back in March. The same point still ring true, and I believe it would be a disservice to the city to lose him from your staff. Citizens I have spoke to both in Oakbridge and Westford are supportive of Brian and appreciate the work he does. He stepped up to a challenging position and has provided solutions to difficult problems. I have yet to meet anyone who thinks Oakbridge would be better off without him, myself included. Thank you for your time and consideration. Sincerely, Melody Cornelius, Mayor of Westford. This one is from Brennan Christman, dear mayor and city council members. I recently heard about our city administrator, Brian Cudgeon's resignation. The news of this resignation is extremely saddening. I have personally worked with him. With Brian Cudgeon on several occasions, and he has always been very organized and great to work with and has loved Oakbridge and its citizens is exactly what Oakbridge needs. Change is never easy, and he came into a mess when he took this position. Clearly, what has been done previously isn't working, and things need to change, and Oakbridge will never find someone as qualified or that wants only the best for Oakbridge. I urge the city council to figure out whatever your differences are. Take your egos out of the equation and stop thinking about yourselves and truly listen to your constituents and convince Brian Cudgeon to reconsider his resignation. To lose him would be detrimental to Oakbridge, and I can guarantee it will be reflected on upcoming ballots. Thank you, Brennan Christman. Letter and support. This is from Pam Wright. Honesty, integrity, and the ability to be fair and respectful to city employees and residents. That's what I look for in an administrator. The ability to find funding for city projects and to make hard decisions is also important. If you have that person as your administrator, hold on to them tight because they are rare. I will say to the current CA and to current city councillors, find a way to talk to residents. That don't that doesn't involve social media. Those Facebook polls are flawed. People will always vote for their personal self-interest. And not what's best for the whole community. With social media, the loudest voices win, but that doesn't mean they are speaking for the majority. Those loud voices are not hired or elected to make tough choices for the rest of us, and they should not be relied on to make decisions. The city councillors were elected for their good decision-making qualities, not to be ventriloquist dummies. Pam Wright, Hanson Street, Oakbridge. That includes public comment. And we will. At this time, and is there anybody there? One more step. Is there anybody online who has public comment that they would like to make? Brian, you'll have to help me out. Okay. I don't see any hands, and no one appears to be trying to unmute, so I am going to move on. We're going to move on to our work session portion of this. Our work session is specifically about our city administrator recruitment process.
Excuse me, Kathy. Looks like it looks like I'm seeing a hand for Jan Hooker on my side.
Oh, okay. Thank you very much. Jan?
No, it was not.
Okay. Thank you, Michelle, for speaking up.
I wonder what that little white hand is. I thought it was my mouse at first, but I moved it, and it's not.
We have a ghost hand.
Apparently.
All right, so our work session is about the recruitment process. Council, I would remind you that we have a Google folder that has all of. The documents from our last process in there. One of the things that I would like us to tackle, first of all, is a definition. And I recognize and Chrissy and councillor Hollitt. Councillor Hollitt and councillor Kenyon probably remember this also. One of the things that as we did this process tripped us up, and I want to make sure we don't trip again. Is vocabulary. Our charter asks that we appoint a pro temp, and it uses the word pro temp. Within six months after a vacancy occurs in the office of administration, the council shall fill the vacancy by appointment. And it uses that word pro temp, and somehow in our last search, we used the word pro temp, and then it kind of morphed into interim, and we had a kind of a bit of a rabbit hole that we went down. So I want to just reinforce. That the word in our council or in our charter uses pro temp. And that means that we are appointing someone to fill a position. And that also includes filling a position that is vacant, not just a position that is absent for a time. So I'd like the council to agree that the word we will use is we are looking for a pro temp, if indeed we are looking for a temporary. That is separate from a hiring of a new city administrator. And give each other some grace if we slip and say interim, but we all know what mean, and that's the word we'll use. Does that sound good? I just want to start us off on the right turn before we get going any further. How's that sound?
I'm okay with that. And I do remember this. I forgive me if I don't remember all the details, but I do remember there was. Some back and forth about the terminology, and I do believe that pro temp was the term that we're supposed to use.
Yep, that is the one in the charter. Go ahead, councillor Kenyon, if you're through, councillor Hollitt, I'm sorry.
Thank you. I agree also that pro temp is the way that it should be referred to, not only when we are speaking about it. But when we draw up a contract, and I think that that's where the issue was in the past, was how the contract was written. For the pro temp.
I agree.
Regardless of that, I also. In reading the charter, read that paragraph. As to say that. When the seat becomes vacant, the council shall appoint an administrator pro temp. Which means that. It's not necessary for us to be seeking. Which means that it's not necessary for us to be seeking a permanent replacement at this time. Our first step would be to seek a pro temp. To fill the six months after the seat becomes vacant. To give us time to look for a full-time replacement.
Well, let's address that issue of it and just agree with the pro temp at this point. And I'm not saying we won't talk about that, but let's continue with that. The pro temp thought is Councillor Whitney or Councillor Spleadoff, do you wish to address the pro temp definition? Go ahead, please. Councillor Spleadoff.
Yes, I agree up there. That's what our charter says. So we need to do a pro temp. But does that mean that we cannot put a pro temp in while. Our city administrators in office?
Correct.
Or does it mean after he's out of office?
When you no longer have a city administrator, then you use, you appoint a pro temp.
Okay, thank you. Just, just trying to make sure.
Okay, Councillor Whitney, go ahead.
Yeah, I remember this issue when we had it before, and it was, there was a lot of discussion around it. And I do agree with using the terminology pro temp. And we did use it pretty interchangeably with interim, so.
Okay. Wonderful. That's great. Okay, so let's all remember to correct one another and remind one another. If we happen to throw in the wrong, wrong words so that we can stick to the right wording, especially when it comes to the written contract. If we indeed do appoint a pro temp. So the next thing I want to talk, I want to just bring up and just as a guideline for our discussions is this time, is the timeline. We, we know that we need to appoint someone or have some. A mechanism in place to have a city administrator on March 1st. We can. Understanding in my mind is we have a couple options. We can, we can work to find a pro temp that will be put in place on March 1st. And we can work to do that on a couple different ways. We can reach out to ElCog and ask them what their pool of available city administrators is. And reach out to that pool. We are not required to wait until we don't have a city administrator to do that. We can do it and be prepared for the time when we won't have one. We could wait until we have no city administrator. And appoint someone at that time to work at finding someone to appoint. We have a lot of different ways that we can do this. But I think the important thing is that we do it in a sensible way to make sure that we have a position filled. To help us. It is imperative that there is someone there to make sure we get the paychecks done and payable. And accounts receivable taken care of. And, but I recognize that we have a lot of, a lot of choices to do with this. Councillor Kenyon has expressed the opinion that, that we don't have to do anything about. Finding a permanent replacement until such time as we've appointed and have in place a pro temp, then we can begin doing that. And yes, I agree, that is one way we couldn't do that, but I think it's a wasted opportunity. Because I believe it's important to get out there that we are looking for a city administrator and see what happens. I hope that you have all taken a look, and I might definitely talk about that. I hope though that all of you have taken a look at the documentation that is in the Google Drive. If you'll look at the, at the one document in there that. That is entitled. Oh geez, do I have it written down? It lays out the whole process that we agreed to as a council. It was actually a resolution. And it delineates everything even down to how we formed it. Or who was on the citizen council committee for the, the final reviews. So if you haven't looked at that, please do. That's, that will help guide your conversation and bring lots of questions, I'm sure. So let's, Councillor Kenyon, I'm going to call on you and ask if you would address. The question that you brought up about the timing of looking for a permanent or applying. Or appointing a CA pro temp. Would you like to express those thoughts again?
Yes, thank you. I. I wanted to, also you mentioned something just now about a resolution number. For a resolution that was passed on the. I did a bunch of research on that timeline when, when the council went through this and I saw the information. That was presented, but I didn't remember that it was made into a resolution, so I wondered if you have that.
I do.
Secondly. I wanted to point out that. When, when we first found out about this and had our first meeting regarding. How to do the hiring process. And you can correct me if I'm wrong, but I was under the impression that it was your wish. And our city administrators' wish to hire a permanent replacement before he even leaves office. And give him the opportunity to, to prepare or prep. That person for the position that they would be entering. Mayor, am I correct? Was that your?
Yes, absolutely. That was my statement. That's, I, I think I would phrase it a little bit differently. It's not my intention that we do that. It's my, it's my belief that that is the best way to go about looking for a replacement. It would be the ideal. Now, will that happen? It may not. I don't know what the pool is like out there for people who are looking for permanent replacements. But I do believe that it is advantageous always in positions, rather than leave a position vacant. Or, or have a pro temp put in, that we look for a permanent replacement. That way, as in any other job, that way the person leaving can familiarize. The person who will actually be doing the job on a permanent basis with what is going on. And, and get them into running speed and off it goes. Now, will that happen? I don't know, but that is my wish. That is always the ideal when we replace people in any job situation. To have a hire that is ready and can overlap a little bit on the, the outgoing person. So yes, do I, I don't, I hope you didn't interpret that as me saying we have to do it this way. We don't, but that is the ideal way, I believe. I strongly believe that, to do that. So does that answer your question? That helps clarify?
Yes, yes, thank you. And that helps me to answer your earlier question on my clarification of. What I pointed out regarding the charter being written to. Hire a pro temp. You know, and that they're allowed to be here for six months while we search for a replacement. So first of all, I guess I would disagree somewhat on the perspective that. It would always be better to have a replacement overlap in the timing. In, in my careers over the last thirty years, all the medical fields I've ever worked in. Never overlap the old with the new, with the outgoing employee with the incoming. It's just not a standard in the. Maybe it's just that field, I'm not sure, but that's what I'm used to, so. Not sure where that comes from, but also my concern is more so on that the way that the charter is written. And that it's, you know, of course voted and approved by the people. To bring in a pro temp. And give ourselves the time. And right now, we actually have. We would have ten months if we wanted to start looking now. But I still think that our first step should be to have an interim. Appointed before the end of Brian's term. So that the interim could start immediately. And it sounds like from our last meeting regarding this topic, Brian's gonna leave information behind. That would prepare them fully for what they would be walking into. So that's my opinion, and I'm finished. Thank you.
Okay, go ahead, honey. And I see Audie's hand, but I can't see if anyone else has a hand up too, so. Go ahead, Audie. Oh, Michelle has a hand too. So Audie and Michelle.
Yeah. In, like the charter says, we have to hire a pro temp. That's the question I asked.
No.
It says we must hire a pro temp.
No.
After. Brian's gone. That's the question I asked.
And you don't.
Okay, so. We can start the pro temp now?
No, you can start the hiring process for a permanent person now. So look at this scenario. If we, if we as a council had a city administrator come to us and say. You know, I'm so glad I've been here for twenty-five years. I'm ready to retire. I'm going to retire at the end of the year. The council should not wait until the end of the year to find a replacement for that individual. They would want to start ahead of time to find a replacement, to have a smooth transition. The charter language doesn't say you have to do this. It says, in the case where you need to have someone come in as a pro temp. Either because there's a temporary vacancy or a permanent vacancy, this is how you do it. Your council appoints someone. In, now, I don't, I have, I'm not gonna go into whether or not it's typical in business to, to fill a position before it leaves. That's always how I've seen it, but regardless of that, it seems to me if you have a timeframe. So in my example, a year, because someone's retiring, you would start trying to hire the, do the hiring process. We would like to find someone, rather than do a pro temp and you lose, you lose stuff in the translation. And it's just nice to have someone who's permanent. If you have the opportunity to do that, why not take it? Is my, my belief. Anybody that you would, if we were able to have our job description ready. And move forward and say, we are looking for a city administrator and get that word out there. It is gonna first take a while for individuals to know that we are looking for someone. It will take a while, especially at this time of year, even if we wait till February, for people to respond. But if you put something out there now and begin to gather your pool saying, for example, maybe we close at the end of January. Maybe we close at mid-February. You then have a pool of applicants in front of you. That you can begin to do the hiring process, because remember it takes, you know, six to eight weeks at least. At least, once you even have your pool. Anyway, that's, that's. I hope that's helpful. I mean, that's how I'm looking at it, is this is a very, you know, it's a straightforward kind of thing. We don't need to. We don't need to wait. Councillor Whitney, I mean, no, Councillor Cooker, you're next.
I think you pretty much answered most of my question, but what I was gonna ask was, we don't have to do a pro temp? We can go right into hiring a permanent?
Yes, you can. Approach, the pro temp provision is there so that when you don't have. Either you don't have it because of a, a temporary vacancy, or you have it because of a permanent vacancy. And you, then, then that's how you fill it. It gives direction to the council. We appoint somebody. If you have the opportunity to fill the position by doing a hiring process, which you have to do anyway at some point, you would have to hire. Then it makes sense to begin that process so that we can do that. I see no advantage whatsoever to having a pro temp come in and delay hiring. A pro temp is important, but it's not advantageous. If you can move from a permanent to a permanent, you're much better off.
So would the pro temp have to go through this similar same hiring process? Or is it just someone that we say, okay, Larry down the street, you know, applied for it and we appoint him? I'm confused. I'm just confused on that part of it and how the pro temp actually works.
All right, so, so let's set them, set them both aside. The pro temp, and we're gonna only talk about a pro temp in a situation where we know we, we don't have a city administrator. Our city administrator has retired or moved on. A pro temp, then, the city council would, would have a process. By which it accepts applications for that position. That can be a process that is just clearly straightforward. Anybody who wants to do this can apply. It can be a process where we reach out to ElCog because they have a list of former city administrators. Who are willing to come in and do temp work for a certain amount of time, but are not interested at all in being a permanent position anywhere. And they rotate around the, the state of Oregon. So we could reach out to that list too and include that in our deliberations. So then, anybody who said, expressed an interest, or we reached out to. And said, we would like you to apply, we'd like you to consider this, then the council would review that. And then the council makes the appointment. That's a pro temp. For a permanent position, the council would put out a job description, an application process. Post it in all the various areas that we do, which are professional areas. You know, on the Elk League of Oregon Cities websites. The West Coast Association for whatever city administrators, all those things. We've been advertised that we're looking for someone. And set the timeline that says we will take applications up until this amount of time, and we would agree on how long we would do that. And there are some suggestions that ElCog can help us with as far as timeframes. You can't make it too long because people who are looking for work will drop out if they find jobs. But you can't make it too short because you want them to, to have time to respond. Taking those, then we have decisions to make. We as a council could decide to do the whole show ourselves. That is typically not recommended. League of Oregon Cities does not recommend that. Last time we had ElCog take the first flush. We had fourteen, I believe, applicants. They took the first flush. They went through and then recommended to us, although we saw the whole list, recommended to us five. We went through that, gave them approval to move forward. We, we set up a process of interviews, contacted five. One had already gotten another job. Down to four, set up interviews. They came to town, we brought them. Set up that interview process with community, with staff, with council, and then made a decision. So there's two separate things, a hiring process for a permanent CA and an appointment process for a.
Thank you for explaining that Kathy, I appreciate it.
Oh, you're welcome. It's, it's, it's confusing. It is confusing. I see Councillor Bjornson's hand up, and I have heard from her. Go ahead, Councillor.
Thank you. It sounds to me, my concern is. You know, the end of February is coming up a lot faster than we think with the holidays and everything. And. Why can't we put out the job description and, and the job listing and the need to reach out to ElCog or LOC or whatever? But also put feelers out for potential pro temp. Because even if we narrow it down to a few candidates. I don't want to be pushed up against a date and feel, who, you know, feel pressured into. Having to choose somebody because we don't have anything else in place. I think we kind of need to hedge our bets and do both.
I totally agree with what you just said. Totally. Did you have any other statements that you want me to bring along?
Um, no, that was it for now.
Okay. Thank you, Councillor Bjornson. Councillor Whitney, then Councillor Kenyon.
Great. So I completely agree with Kathy and Councillor Bjornson with their statements. I feel that the pro temp is meant to be more of a bridge from a permanent position to a permanent position. It's meant to be temporary and not permanent. And I really agree with starting to work on the hiring process. While at the same time looking. While at the same time looking for recruitment for a pro tem. For a pro tem and for hiring, I think we need to. Cast out as broad as we can. You know, look at the statewide list for pro tem's along with anybody else that may be interested. Because you just don't know who will be interested and you know, what their history is and what they would bring to our community. Because you know, even in a temporary situation, somebody can bring a lot of valuable knowledge and information and skills. That can really be helpful. So I think it just behooves us to reach as far as we can with that. And then of course, really starting that hiring process. And maybe if we don't get. A hiring process started, say it's only a month or two out before it looks like we'll have somebody hired up. I personally would be interested in asking Brian to remain for another month or two. To help bridge that gap instead of pulling someone completely new in as a pro tem. With not knowing all the processes, not knowing everything that's going on. You know, I think it would just help with the transition and keep it much smoother. So that is, you know, really what I would like to see.
Thank you, Counselor Whitney. I appreciate that. Counselor Kenyon, go ahead. Are you muted? I can't tell if you're talking.
Sorry about that. I agree with Counselor Bjornson and. What the mayor was saying, actually what a lot of people are saying on. Starting a process for hiring a permanent replacement. Soon. But I, my big concern was that it felt like there was a push to. Get a full-time replacement. And get them cross-trained.
You froze, Dawn. The last word I heard was cross-train. I don't know if you can hear me. Okay.
I'm gonna feel like we.
There you go. So did you hear that you froze up?
No.
Okay, so the last word I heard was cross-train, that there was a push to get another CA hired. And cross-trained and anything after that didn't come through. I know that's difficult. That's.
Yeah, that's hard. I don't. That probably sums it up. I just, I felt like that was too much of a rush. I'd like to see us focus on both. Put in the word out for a replacement and. Getting the process started to hire a pro tem in case one is needed. And of course, that would have a start date. And essentially an end date. I mean, we could always end it sooner, but.
Which would have a start and end date?
A, a pro tem, a pro tem position is, you know, you would start March 1st and at most it would go for six months.
Right. We can't go any longer than six months without renewing.
Right.
Okay, good. Well, I hope this discussion has helped relieve your, your, your angst about a push. I, I don't intend to say we need to push this and I have been through some job. Job recruitments where there was a rush to do something for some various reasons. But no, I don't believe that there was a rush at all to do this, but I believe like you've stated, Melissa stated. Counselor Whitney has stated, you know, that we can do things, we can do this simultaneously. Begin looking at the pro tem process and also. Get out the word that we are looking for a permanent CA and get that application out there and in the wind. So that we can see what, see what it blows in. So I think we're agreed with that. Counselor Audi. I'm sorry, my mouth is getting dry. Counselor Sledoff, go ahead.
Yes, I just wanted to make sure so we can put out for a pro tem and a full-time, right?
Absolutely.
We can start that now.
Yep.
We don't have to wait till the, the position is vacant.
No, we do not.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. You're welcome.
And I agree with everyone else. I think we should get that going as soon as possible.
Okay, so it sounds like we're at the point where we can say and give some direction. Or give some direction to ourselves here that we have agreed that we want to start those processes. We can reach out to ElCog and get their lists. Of anybody who would potentially be interested and begin that contact of, hey, here it is. Also, put together an application and get it posted saying we are looking for a pro tem. And see what, what that also brings in for counselors to take a look at. And then also, we need to look at the job description. And determine any changes that we want made into it. Is it accurate? So that we can get a job description posted. And then we can talk about a. Open, open-ended date or a, we are accepting applications for the permanent position. Until February 1st or. Open, oh, that's a good suggestion. Brian said you can, you can do it open until filled. That way we're not tied to a date. We can, we can determine the cutoff when.
Open till filled, the first review happens on this date.
Okay, okay. So open till filled with the first reviews intended on February 15th. Or whatever. You know, so that's something to be thinking about in the back of our heads. We'll have more discussion about this at our council meeting where we can take a vote. But it sounds like we're of the mind to move forward with both simultaneously. Am I correct in that summation? And. We can say yes. All right. So I guess what I'll ask is anybody disagree with that in any way? So that, that, let's address that first. Counselor Holliday, you had popped up for the first time.
My first question.
Okay, go ahead, Audi.
I would like to find out. What requirements? Did Brian have? Did he have a city administrator?
Yeah.
So he was a city administrator before.
No, so.
That's before I was on, so I.
Yeah, sure. So take a look at that Google Drive. It has, it has the requirements and qualifications in there.
Okay.
That's what you'll wanna review because there's a whole list here of things.
Okay, I was trying to find it today and I couldn't.
I'll send you another link.
Okay.
All right, thanks, Brian.
And if you, if you go into the link and you're still not sure what you're looking at, call me and I'll walk you through it too.
Okay.
Okay, if that's a help. Counselor Holliday, are you able to talk?
Yeah, can you hear me?
I can hear you now.
I just wanted to reiterate that I also. Like the idea of first getting a pro tem and then tackling the permanent position kind of simultaneously. But I would like that we all are involved in the description for the pro tem and involved in the posting. Of that for the pro tem. And just. Hoping that we can be involved on that. I don't wanna put that all on Brian's plate to deal with.
That's a good thing. So all that information from the past, so that we're not recreating wheels here, is in that Google Drive. So let's take a look at it. We will set aside time at our next council meeting to actually go through it. And it may be that as we read it, we think it is just perfect the way it is and change the dates and off it goes. Or we may have some changes, but let's be prepared to do that. So take some time, everyone, to familiarize yourselves and that will be on the agenda. That hit the mark, Chrissy?
Yeah.
Okay, good. Counselor Kenyon, go ahead.
Yes, I wanted to point out that I have also been looking for that Google Drive that you're referring to.
Oh.
I don't see an invitation to it, nor do I see it as a shared folder in my drive.
So. Brian will send you another link and get with you about making sure that you can find it. And again, the invitation is open if you're in it and I think once you're in it, you'll be okay.
Yeah, I'm very familiar with Google Drive.
Yeah, I know you are. I know you are.
Don't have it, so.
So let's make sure that, that we, that everybody has it. So all of you counselors, make sure that you have. Go in and verify that you have that drive, that you can access the drive and know how to get through it. Well, thank you, council. We've done a great job in a short amount of time packed in there. I, I think we have some good direction for our next council meeting. We will get a list. We will get a list from ElCog and have it ready for us at our next council meeting to see. I've also asked ElCog to give us a, some sort of breakdown on the costs. I, we looked through the old bills, but they're kind of all jumbled together because we have a temporary CA here. Well, let's see if I can do this right. A pro tem here. And so the billing was all jumbled together and I couldn't pull apart. What was the fee for running the search as opposed to the fee for looking over the applications? As opposed to the fee for a CA. So I've asked them to see if they can parse that out. So we'll have a number in front of us. Should we ask them to do anything like that? And we'll have that hopefully available at our, at our next meeting too. So it's 6:10. I see hands up, so let's finish up with that. And then I'll remind everybody, there's a meeting at 6:30 if you care to attend in person over at Green Waters. So Counselor Bjornson, go ahead, and then Counselor Kenyon.
I just wanted to please ask to send me that invitation as well for the Google Drive. Thank you.
Will do. Counselor Kenyon, go ahead.
Thank you. I just wanted to point out that on the, the last time. That we needed to hire a pro tem. The council made the decision to. I think there was three counselors that were in charge of reviewing the list from ElCog. And by November 18th at a council meeting. The selection was made. So the pro tem part of it is really simple and easy. They're all former city administrators. So I just wanted to point out that part is fast. It's not something we really have to work hard on. We should probably work harder on making sure the whole. Process that we're gonna do for the CA position. Is the, the permanent position is all lined out.
Absolutely. Thank you for pointing that out. And, and the only, if I remember correctly, the only part that was. You know, a little bit tedious was determining who was available and who was interested. Because I think we, we use the ElCog tool. But we'll have to see what that looks like and go from there as well as, you know, putting out the word and an application that. We are looking for a temporary for anybody who, who feels they would like to apply. Counselor Whitney, go ahead.
Sorry, I just wanted to really quick let everybody know that when Melissa was talking. We all received an email from Brian with that Google Drive information.
Yay, the wonders of electronics and digital. Excellent. So check your emails, ladies and gentlemen.
Yeah, and also I would be interested in any work groups surrounding this.
Wonderful. Thank you. Counselor Sledoff.
Yes, I just wanted to know, are all the counselors going to be involved in selecting a. New manager, if that's what it comes to?
Now, are you talking about a permanent or a temporary?
A permanent?
Yes, all the.
Or is that go to, does that go to? So many, so many citizens and so many counselors or how is that?
You go through and you read that information, once you get into the Google, you'll see that it was made up. Okay, so let me backtrack. Ultimately, the decision to offer a job is the council's responsibility, okay? But we have a citizen and council review board. And if you'll go into that information, you'll see what it was comprised of. And that's a discussion that we will be having about, do we wanna follow this same process or not? But it is a community decision also in the respect that we will be looking for input from staff. From community, from specific areas in our community, educators, business owners, forest service personnel. All sorts of things. And they will be giving the council feedback. The council will then take that feedback and, and make a decision who they would like to offer. Offer employment to. Does that answer your question?
Okay, I, I just wanted to make sure, who chooses the counselors?
We'll have in the future, at, at the next, maybe the next meeting, because there is a difference in opinion, I believe. We did it one way last time. I sense that there are some, there is some disagreement with that, so we will get to that. And we will make a decision as to how we will make that selection of our council community group.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Counselor Holliday, your hands up.
I just was thinking that when would our next meeting be for work session? And can we make sure at our next meeting that we. Discuss the process for selecting a pro tem and then also discuss the process for permanent. And that we just really kinda hash that out at that next meeting.
Yes, we plan on doing that. That will be on the agenda on our next meeting. So I've encouraged you all to take a look at the Google Drive, make sure you're familiar with how it was in the past. Let's not recreate any wheels. We don't have to, but let's make the wheel better.
So Mayor, yeah, begin the next regular session so we can actually make a motion to approve. So what I would hope to do is have. A permanent position description ready to go. And a, and a pro tem description ready to go. To be able to be voted on if, if it's time for, for approval to go forward. Or sent back for revision.
Yeah, that makes sense. It's always, it's always easier to work with something in front of you. And then, you know, change it, morph it, tear it up and throw it out the window, but let's start with that and go forward.
Are we saying that at, at the December 16th meeting, we're gonna be voting on a job description? And the whole process or are we gonna be working on it?
We will be doing, well, we could, we could potentially be voting on it. We'll, we will have something. We will present when your agenda packet, this is, these are possibility, this is a possibility. It's up to us then to look at and go, yeah, well, as I looked at it over the past two weeks, this doesn't work and I'd like these changes. And so we will do that too, but it's always better to work first from something rather than nothing. And so that will be our beginning thing. I don't anticipate that we will come to an agreement at our next meeting and be feel comfortable on voting it on it. But I do want us to have that option available to us. What we do wanna make sure is that we're able to vote on moving forward with this, the pro tem process. And get that on track.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Counselor Whitney, go ahead.
I just wanna throw out there that one thing, well, the last time we went through this process, not all of council participated in. The interviews and I feel like with this council that all of us would really like to be very heavily involved.
Right.
So I, I would just like to put that out there that I feel that way as well. And, and then also I think it's important to start thinking about. The citizens that we would want to include in this review board and really start pulling some names together of people. That we think and feel would be a good fit for these processes.
Yes.
Because, you know, this is a community effort and.
That's the process I think that we need to be talking about for sure next week or in two weeks.
Okay, and.
Counsel, I am just gonna let you know that it's at 6:15 and. We have another meeting. Brian and I need to be in a meeting at 6:30. So go ahead, but give me five minutes to be down.
I, I still have one more thing. And, and I really agree with Counselor Holliday about. Being able to hash out a little more in a work session. Before we bring a lot to a meeting for a decision. I think it would be a lot easier in a work session opposed to in a city council meeting. I think we can get a lot further.
So would you prefer that we do a work session? We go ahead, we're not gonna have a lot, I believe, on our next meeting. I believe we can do a work session for an hour and then move into a council meeting. That way, if there is any decisions that we want to make, we can make them if we've come to, to come to that. But if I don't have something on the agenda saying this is what we're working toward and what we have. So that the public knows. um, so that the public knows we are discussing it, um, we couldn't make any decisions anyway. Even if we, you know, for some reason went through a work session for an hour, came to a wonderful decision, we all agreed with it. I wouldn't move it forward to a motion because the public wouldn't have known what it was.
Yeah, so I really like that we had our work session after our meeting today. Um, I think it helped us get through the items that needed to be handled by city council. You know, that are regular and city agenda type items. And it didn't put that pressure um, in the work session to come up with an absolute one hundred percent decision that, you know, that we would be voting on. I think it just helps with the flow and um, and the communication between all of us.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Sledoff, go ahead.
Audie, you're muted.
If we all meet, is that considered as a meeting? Or do we do it in a work session?
What do you mean, Audie? You're gonna have to give me more information.
Well, is, as far as, like Bobby was saying, that we're, we all involved in deciding on who is the, you know, along with the citizens, who we elect to move on with their city administrator, you know, four or five people, whatever. So if we, if we meet, does that constitute as a public meeting?
So there is a process that we use for hiring, Audie, and that's, and that is part of an executive session. So when it comes to hiring, we go into an executive session to discuss who we believe should be uh, an offer should be made to. Then we move out of the executive session into a regular meeting. And we say, the council would like to offer a job to this person. So that's how that works, but we'll go through all that process so that you understand it. And it's delineated in those documents as far as process, which I think you'll get a lot out of. I really do.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. You're welcome. Okay, council, I appreciate it. Um, good job. We have a big job ahead of us. So um, don't hesitate, you know, as you're reading through stuff, if you don't understand it, um, you know, to ask questions and, and I'm happy to answer any questions that I can. I know Brian is happy to answer questions um, also about, you know, anything you happen to be reading. Dawn, I will, I will send to all of council the meeting, the help me, resolution and the date that you talked about early, that they passed um, the process. Um, I'll send that to you um, tomorrow. I don't have it in my notes or I would just give it to you. I can tell you what time on the tape to listen to it, but I don't have the date. So I will send it all to you. Is that okay?
Yeah.
Okay, sounds good. All right, ladies and gentlemen, the Oak Ridge City Council at uh, six twenty uh, regular special session and work session is now adjourned. Have a good evening, everyone.
Good night.
Thank you. Good night.
I just wanted to say this meeting went real good today. I'm really happy.
Good night, Audie.
For everyone.